Welcome to the March 8, 2016 Selectmen's Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call though. Cindy King is present.
Gordon Clark present.
Carolyn Smart present. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the meeting is being tape recorded and there's a member of the audience that'll also be recording as well. 1.4 Chairman's additions and deletions. I have none. Is there anything Jim that...
No mention.
Okay. 2.1 Review and approve one-day liquor license for Jennifer Davidson for Townsend Congressional Church for charity auction on May 7, 2016 with serving hours from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Any questions on...
Make a motion that we review and approve or approve the one-day liquor license for Jennifer Davidson to the Congregational Church, charity auction, May 7, with serving hours from 6 to 9.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have it here to sign, Jody?
Yes.
We have the list of conditions attached.
It's attached, yes.
Okay. Do you sign both of these?
Yes.
Yeah, one goes to the A, B, C, C, and the other...
Do I do it now or after?
It's up to you. I'll be signing out now. I'll continue on.
Okay.
2.2 Review and approve junk collector's license for MGS medals and for the town clerk to sign.
Make a motion to approve, review and approve the junk collector's license for MGS medals and for the town clerk to sign.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you have that one too, Jody? That's just going to be the town clerk.
She's just going to forward it off? We don't have to review it?
Okay. 3.1 Discuss setting up a meeting with the Mason and Lunenburg Boards of Selectmen's to discuss the pipeline. And I see Carolyn Sellers has joined us. Do you want to come up and talk to us about this?
Well, this is something we talked about, I think, last August or September. And you guys are going to take the lead on inviting the Mason Selectmen, the Lunenburg Selectmen to have a joint meeting to talk about pipeline strategies. You know, we're all on that Pittsburgh lateral.
Yes.
There are the only three towns on it. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, a lot of the... I think over the last six months, a lot of things have fallen off the Selectmen's plate related to the pipeline. And people, I see people in town and they don't even know that the pipeline's even still even coming through Townsend. And, you know, it is cutting right through all of West Townsend from Mason border to Lunenburg border. And, you know, it's the high-pressure pipeline. We, you know, the town voted against the pipeline. And I just, there's, this is one thing. There's actually, there's a few other things that the Selectmen need to either, you know, step up and start covering or find, you know, give some authority for someone to start covering.
The coalition.
Yeah. So, so the first thing is this, do we go to all of them all right now or then?
Yeah.
Okay, the first thing is the, is this meeting with the Selectmen, you know, the Selectmen, we had some conversations with the Select, with the town manager in, or town administrator, Carrie Spindel.
I think she's a town manager in Lunenburg.
Lunenburg. And the Mason Selectmen.
Yes.
And they were all interested and said, yeah, let's just talk to see.
Let's form a little coalition amongst us.
Yeah, to see how we can work together to fight this because none of these three towns want this to happen. So that was that. The other thing was the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, which is this group of 14 communities from Ashby or Ashby, I think it's Ashby, it goes all the way to Peabody now, Dandres. And this is something that actually Townsend and Groton and Pepperell started. And, you know, Andy Sheehan until he left was one of the co-chairs of this group. And he and Leslie Gabrilsker have been covering, you know, were covering the meetings for Townsend. But over the last, you know, since Leslie's on leave, there's, no one's been covering. And, you know, Jim hasn't come on board yet with that group yet. And Andy's gone, so no one has been covering it. We, the Coalition has put another person from Drakehead as, you know, the co-chair because, you know, it is important to have someone as a co-chair who's an affected community because even though the Selectmen in Groton and Pepperell still come and, you know, and share the meetings, they aren't even in the direct path of the pipeline. They're only on alternate routes right now. So it's important for Townsend to step up and take their role in this group. I go to the meetings because I care and I'm interested and help them sometimes contribute some information to them. But, you know, I have no role as an official, a town official, in this at all. So I can't say, oh yeah, Townsend agrees because I can't, I don't have that authority. So that was the other thing. And then...
Hold on just a minute. Have you had a chance to talk to Mark Andrews about that?
Mark and I spoke briefly and we spoke last week as well.
Yeah.
And I'd be, I'd be happy to step into the, to the role that Andy was playing.
Okay.
Obviously I'd be coming up to, up to speed.
Yes.
Because this is a different project than the portion of the project that I was familiar with in my last job.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'd be...
The same actors, so.
And we did, we did file the, you know, the interview or paperwork.
Yep.
So we are, we do have a little standing in the matter, but I'd...
That'd be great, yeah.
Be happy to...
Okay.
Carpool with you.
Yeah, sure.
And I don't know if one of the Selectmen will be interested. And I know Sue, she was on it for a little while, right? And then Leslie took your spot, is that, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, because I wasn't able to go when they were having their meeting.
Early in the mornings, right? If I remember correctly.
They tend to be 10 to noon or 10 to 11, 10 to noon.
They've been meeting about once a month, right? I think it's February...
I'd be three weeks, I think, about now.
Okay.
Our next meeting is March 31st, no, March 28th, March 28th, Monday, March 28th in Drakehead.
Okay. So we'll see how Leslie's feeling if not one of the Selectmen can fill his spot. So if my colleagues want to think about who would like to do that. I know I went to a couple of the public comments and Carolyn was nice enough to write some things up for us and, you know, we really appreciate that.
So that's the next thing, actually, is the public comment hearing. The DPU has filed the forced survey act, or Kinder Morgan has filed with the Department of Public Utilities in Massachusetts to force survey access on 450 properties where people didn't grant them permission or refused to allow permission. And of those 450 properties across Massachusetts, about 45 or 50 are on the Pittsburgh lateral, mostly in Townsend and some in Lunenburg as well. So the DPU is having a hear, they're setting up hearings, a local hearing is going to be on Tuesday, April 5 in Lunenburg.
Yeah, it looks like the 29th is out in Berkshire.
Yeah, it's out in the Berkshires. They have six, six different hearings across the state. And this, you know, this kind of shows the, you know, Kinder Morgan filed this at the end of, and they filed this at the end of January and asked DPU to make a decision by March 1st. Right? So DPU, likely DPU said, no, this is a serious thing. We have to talk to the communities and get information. So they're having these local hearings and the final written comments are due by May 6th. So there is time for that, too. But it is good. And as you know, Carolyn, when you go to a, as a Selectman, you get to speak first. They can jump to the head of the line. So if you can, if one of you could come on to the 5th, I'm sure, you know, Jim could put up some...
Absolutely.
Comments before I could help you with those, so.
Andy and I went to the last one and he spoke for the Coalition and I spoke for the Selectmen.
Yeah.
I think all of us should go to April 5.
Yeah.
It's pretty informative to hear what the other folks are...
Yeah, it's good to hear. And this is, you know, this is kind of an unprecedented thing, the scale of the potential eminent domain takings in this project are enormous.
There's a lot of upset residents.
Yeah.
Like you said, 50% are denying and they're...
Yeah, more than that. Almost every, if you look at the, now because of the, the DPU docket didn't even include everybody who denied. They didn't include the, they didn't include the town land. They didn't include the Townsend Conservation Land Trust land. So, but, but they've included a lot of land and so it's important to do that.
Yeah, and I think this, where this is, we're going real quick and I appreciate that, but this is a DPU public hearing.
Yes.
This is not something that we're necessarily, the Selectmen...
Anybody can go and comment.
Need to be the ones that represent the town. If everybody in town wants to go...
Right.
This is open to the entire public to go. It's a regional DPU public hearing, so anyone can go.
Yeah.
So please join us.
The Townsend Conservation Land Trust is putting, helping to put together some, you know, talking points and bullet points for people to, people who don't know about the process to know some things to talk about. So, you know, one of the, one of the main things with this project right now is this is, you know, Kinder Morgan hasn't identified that they really even need this project. So why are we wasting all our times and all DPU's time doing this? You know, if they, if Kinder Morgan went and just used, increased the size of the pipes they have in southern Massachusetts, they have all those properties already under agreement. They wouldn't have to get any new things. So anyway, that's just an example.
And what's up to, I haven't had a chance to follow. Is Baker's Administration still working on that plan of doing that? I remember...
You know, but it's hard to, it's really, it's, it's, it often seems like the Baker Administration is talking out of both sides of their mouth right now, actually. They do say that, you know, that the governor is into improving infrastructure, but then sometimes his Secretary of Environmental Affairs says, oh, we need all these gas pipelines built. And, and if those of you that haven't been following this project, and about a month ago, the, you know, the Federal Department of Energy approved export permission for companies to export United States natural gas into Nova Scotia and then that will go out to the world.
Which is what we said a year ago, Carolyn.
We said that two years ago.
Two years ago.
And everybody laughed.
This is right. I think did. These are conspiracy theorists.
Right, right, right. So, but that, and now, now it's, the dots are connecting. So, but Kinder Morgan on their official statements, they say, oh, we don't have any contracts with export. But when people in Northfield ask them one-on-one at one of those open houses, say, you know, so what export companies you talk to? The guy says, oh, we're talking to Pirating, we're talking to Bearhead, he's been, you know, and all the ones, the very ones that were just approved. So this is, you know, something that's...
I didn't realize that, but not surprising.
Yeah, so, and the other thing that people don't realize is that once the United States starts exporting a lot of gas, then the price of natural gas for all of us is going to rise.
There's a big market over there.
So everything you hear on TV, which is basically these ads on TV of by coalitions funded by Kinder Morgan lobbyists that say, we need those pipelines or our electricity prices will go down if we get these pipelines in. That's all just their lobbying. Because what the, the federal government, they've done studies that says if we export natural gas, the price of natural gas in the United States is going to rise closer to the world level. And the world level will come down closer to the United States level. So like big manufacturers and big commercials, the big industrial uses of gas, chemical companies, cement, glass companies, they're opposed to these exports because it makes them even less competitive in the world market. So it is really, it's not as simple as Kinder Morgan makes it out to be.
No, no. So you want to go over the other dates? Is there anyone else that's close?
Well, no, that's really the closest. Something goes out to Drakehead.
Yeah, Drakehead.
So there's six of them across the state.
And I asked Jody to put that up tonight. So she's putting the dates up online for anybody that wants to...
Right. And then the final thing I just wanted, there was also on kind of working through the town government system before everything kind of fell, you know, things got lost in the shuffle of new people, new things, is the, is setting up a working group of town officials. You know, now that this project, you know, Kinder Morgan filed officially with FERC, this is, you know, a real official filing. And they have, you know, 1,200, 1,300 pages of documents covering everything from, you know, wetlands to public safety. And what some other towns have done is organized like working groups of town officials who would meet just, you know, maybe once a month or just to kind of make sure, raising the right questions and looking at the right things. And, you know, they typically involve, you know, the Fire Department, police, water health, conservation commission, assessors because, you know, it's best big thing too. Concom, Water Department in Townsend, certainly the Water Department because it goes right through watershed lands to the Water Department. So, so that's something that I think that people were working on, but has kind of fallen off the radar.
Radar.
The radar. And so I want to make sure we get that back up on our radar as well.
So something we can organize maybe in the next few weeks?
Yep.
Okay. And maybe have more of an open, you know? I'm sorry, so.
Right.
So that's all, that's all I had to update you and to see if you have any more questions about where we are with the process. You know, you know, Townsend Conservation Land Trust people and myself have been kind of keeping people informed. We have a lot of the landowners have contacted and on our email list. But there was also a town email list at one point, too, that I'm not sure what's happened with that, that there were a whole bunch of people on. So I'm not sure if some of those people have lost track of the pipeline.
I think Leslie had that email list put together, right?
Yeah, she did, yeah.
So maybe, I don't know if Conservation's meeting tomorrow night. Maybe I'll touch, maybe I'll sneak in and just touch base with them and see.
Okay. And if maybe someone, you know, maybe, maybe someone else in the mean of land use, so someone could take on that little task for, as well. Because it's important, you know, this is something, this is a, an unprecedented project.
She forwarded like the Google Groups stuff that I was on and some of the other things that she got from the Coalition. I think it's important, too.
Yeah, yeah. And these are, you know, this is an unprecedented project for Townsend and, you know, for the state and for the region. So it's important to stay on top of it in Townsend. You know, we're still, this lateral is definitely impacting us, but we're still an alternative route for the main pipeline and, you know, an alternative location for the compressor station that they're talking about being in Edgewood Switch now. So it's important to be on our toes, so.
Now, has anybody touched base with Edgewood? Let's just see if they want to join Lunenburg and Mason.
Well, they were thinking just that the, there is, you know, there are already three big municipal coalitions. There's the one we're in that goes all the way to the east, all the way to the ocean now, to the end of Peabody. And then there's one out in Franklin County, out that way for western part of the state. And then all of New Hampshire, every municipality in New Hampshire is in a coalition together. So they've been working together. And so Mason is part of that.
Okay.
What we're looking for is this one, this Pittsburgh lateral.
This lateral.
Because people forget about the lateral that comes down. And even in the state's comments, the DEP's comments, they said something about this pipeline wasn't affecting any ACECs, you know, an area of critical environmental concern. And the whole route in Townsend is an area of critical environmental concern. And that's, you, you, when you, when the town agreed to be an area of critical, that was something that we decided, we endorsed that decision because we knew how important the environment is in Townsend, how important the Squanaw Cook River is and our water resources. And so to have, you know, have the state not notice that this lateral comes right through it. And there's no, and this lateral, again, as we've talked about, you know, last summer and summer before that, the, this lateral is not, there's no, they say now that National Grid is going to use some capacity on this lateral, but there's plenty of capacity in this lateral that comes, apparently this route comes up from like through Lancaster and Lunenburg and ends at Pittsburgh. And they, it's like saturated 58,000 decatherm's per day. And even on the coldest days that, you know, I checked on, you can check online to see how much capacity is going through on that really cold Valentine's Day. It was only like 17,000 decatherm's per day. And National Grid wants 15,000 decatherm's. And so that's still way less than the exact capacity of the existing route. So there's no reason to bring 120,000 decatherm's down right through Townsend and Lunenburg.
Any word on any contracts that they're negotiating? I know they needed at least 10 contracts, they said.
Well, the big, well, that's the big thing right now, actually. This week is the state, well, they've extended that here. We can talk about that later, but the, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it will directly affect Unitil yet, but National Grid and Eversource have asked for permission to charge their electric customers a tariff so they can reserve capacity on the pipeline. So...
Something we talked about.
We talked about that, too. Right. And so before they were trying to get the whole state to do it and the state said no, but then this last year the governor or the DPU said, well, we'll entertain proposals. So now National Grid and Eversource are meeting. There's actually a hearing in Boston on Thursday afternoon on the, on National Grid's request to buy capacity on the Kinder Morgan pipeline and then charge your electric customers for it.
Which is what was said.
Yeah, and so, but there's also going to be, that, that docket's going to open until the middle of May. And there's going to be, the local hearing on that's going to be in Methuen on, in May, I think it's May 11th. I'd have to check that.
Okay.
So, yep, so they're still, they're still playing games and we still need to, you know, be vigilant and keep on it, so.
So we'll absolutely be there April 5.
All right.
And just keep touch with Jim and...
Okay.
And we'll fill the alternate spot as well if needed.
Yep. And then you meet out to Mason and, you know, make a conversation, get a conversation with Mason and Lunenburg.
I think we decided on Wednesday nights the last, when we...
I don't know, you'd have to check and see with them, with their, you know, I think that, I think they all meet Tuesday night or something or...
Yeah. So we were going with a different...
But yeah, but yeah. But Jim, you can meet out and I can send you the contacts to the Mason Board of Selectmen. You know Carrie probably, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
And just to let you know, I checked my schedule on the 28th, that Drakehead meeting. I have a conflict, so I'm not available that morning.
I was just referring to the April 5 meeting.
Oh, I know, but we also talked about the, the Drakehead...
The Drake, yeah, I just announced it.
Yeah, I can't do that. Sorry, folks. Oh, that's number four. Sorry, they made me change it today. Claire, that's four, not three. They made me change it today.
Okay.
State computer. Sorry, folks. That's okay. 3.2 Discuss and approve the cultural council using the Council on Aging Bus for their Earth Day celebrations. And Ed, I know you came to talk to us about this.
Yeah. They come, the, the cultural council came to Karen Panfield, the senior, senior director for the Senior Center. And that had to be approved by the Council on Aging, which I'm the chair for. So we had a meeting today and we basically approved that. We would let, we would let them and the town use the LRTA bus, okay? Now, we got, we got in writing, we also have from Chris Curry, I believe it's Curry, yes, who is the, what is he, the Transit Program Manager. And he gave us a written answer that we can do that, okay? There are some stipulations, there always are. And the first stipulation, of course, is the LRTA, and we have that. The second would be that we would like to have, we need a approved driver, the same drivers that we use, our drivers drive that bus, okay? The second, the, the third one would be, there's an hourly wage for that individual. So I don't know how long they need the bus, but that's okay. Just remember that we, you have to pay for the, the town has to pay for their salary. The fourth one is the cost of fuel of running the bus. Now, I don't know how many trips they are, but we will have the bus full. Tank will be topped off when we start this. And then at the end, the last, the last run, we will go back, fill it, and then submit the bill. But that's all right. And then, okay. And then number five is we need to have the police department, or a police department representative oversee the route, okay, or the stopping points, so it's, everything is safe. And then the last one is, of course, you guys and gals, which would be the approval from the Selectmen. So I have the two documents. I have the signed response from the Council on Aging Board here and all that. And I have the, the in writing approval from the LRTA. And I'd like to submit that to you.
Thank you. Now, did, in your meeting today, did you have discussions on where that would be funded from? This is the first that...
I don't.
Madam Chair, I did meet with the Cultural Council on the issue and they would fund it from their proceeds and...
So the Earth Day proceeds would actually pay for the cost?
They would fund the hourly for the driver as well as the fuel. And the only, the only thought I had, and I shared that with Karen, was to make certain, again, that the police department was involved on the route. So I'm glad that that was worked into your, your meeting today and your vote. Just to make certain that the PD knows where the loop is going to be, because it's going to be a continual loop.
Yes.
Not just a couple of shuttles. They'll be running the whole day between Atwood Acres and down to the, to the common. So we just want to make sure that where the bus is stopping, where people are getting on and off is saying, please make that call.
Atwood Acres or the Senior Center?
I was told as far out as Atwood Acres.
Oh, as far out.
Right. And then down through the Senior Center to the common and back around the whole loop again.
If, if there's, if there's an issue of parking for any, any of the people that are going to take advantage of this, there is a lot of parking at the Senior Center.
That was the other thing that they, Madam Chair, if I may, the other thing that they had suggested would be just that, that if the shuttle is working that loop, there is all the parking at Senior Center and the library, that people could park there, pick up the shuttle and come down to the, to the event on Earth Day.
Which would take away the congestion you might end up with downtown.
Have you identified the drop-off point yet or are you working that out with the police department?
No, I have not.
Okay.
We have not, rather. That has to be worked out with the, the police department and...
Oh, the cultural people, the birthday people, birthday people are going to do that, right?
Yeah, they have to do that.
Okay, yeah, all right.
This whole thing, let's just make sure that we can put this whole thing, this, this process together and, and, and everybody is on board with it and it's upright.
And one last comment. I think it's a great example of the Council on Aging working together with another group in town to share resources, which is what we should be doing. And this is just, it's a great event. It's bigger this year in plan than it has been in prior years. So this is going to be, I think, only a benefit to everybody, so congratulations to you guys for doing that.
Thank you.
This is great with the LRTA to allow us to use the bus for a community event and not simply, you know, well, not simply, but for the use that we, we have it here, that
And that is a, that's another feather in the cap of...
Something to remember on future community events of this nature. Yes.
Yeah. Well, we've done, the Senior Center has come a long way, really. And so that's another feather in our hat, in our, in our hat, it really is. Like you said, we'll do it, right?
So you're working this out with Karen Clement and everything?
Yes, we'll work out the details, but there would be the required vote of support from the Board of Selectmen, so that's what's...
I make a motion that we approve the Cultural Council using the Council on Aging Bus for their Earth Day celebration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And anybody that wants to volunteer to help Karen clean everything up the day before? It's a lot of work going into Earth Day. She does it.
Well...
Was down there last year. We were down there for a long time setting it up, so. And it's really turned out to be, she had 120 vendors last year. I don't know what she's up to this year, but I heard it was even higher, so.
Yeah, that's good.
That is good.
There's other activities as well. There's other activities as well. I mean, we got in, what's it, the 19th? I believe it's the 19th or 20th, the Senior Center and the Library, we've got that thing going on there, which is the indoor golf thing that kids and people like. Plus, the seniors are putting together Back in Time. And Back in Time is items from the past, like an old phone, hello, cameras, old things like that. And we do a list, and we put the picture there, and all the kids have to do is connect the lines. And if they do, but we've been offering, I think, three prizes, if I remember correctly. One would be, well, they're all like McDonald's, and Dunkin' Donuts, and the pizza place.
That's nice.
And a little gift card kind of thing. So, the kids will do that.
Yeah.
They had a lot of fun last year when we did this.
Yeah, I know Kathy likes to bring her granddaughter to the golf thing, it's a lot of fun.
You could come and play.
Yeah, I can talk to my husband.
And maybe you'll get a hole-in-one, whatever. All right, Ed's talking too much, and I got to go.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much.
We voted, right?
Do you have the supervisory union?
So, we're down to our work session. Town administrator updates and reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, I don't have a written report. The board knows that on Friday I was not in great shape, went home and didn't make it back up right until just Sunday night. So, if anybody is feeling the sniffles, take care, because it's a brutal cold that's going on out there right now. But I do have some updates for you to offer that are consistent with what did appear on the agenda. Under personnel, health insurance. We've had some discussion about what health insurance rates were projected to do for us. We, as everybody knows, belong to the Maya Health Insurance Group. It's a Blue Cross group, part of a consortium of a number of communities statewide. They rolled out that their rates were expected to be between 6.8, I apologize, 6.8% and 11.5%. We've gone out to bid on the health insurance, and part of the way that works is Maya takes note, quite honestly, Maya takes note of communities that are out to bid, and it's not uncommon for them to then, as a matter of course, through their Board of Directors, to vote to supplement the rate for that coming year for those communities that are considered at risk of leaving the pool. I'm not on the board, I don't know what the votes were, but it's good news to find that while, again, the range is supposed to be 6.8 to 11.5, our renewal is coming at 5.5. While 5.5 is great compared to 11.5, it's still about 60 grand in the budget for us for the town taxpayer's share of health insurance. So, this is just one of the components of health insurance moving forward, obviously. Discussions with the collective bargaining groups and the possibility of getting before the select board either with votes from the Insurance Advisory Committee comprised of members of each Public Safety, Public Employee, and Public Works Union, or if necessary, and only if necessary, an actual public employee group that is called for under Chapter 32B, Section 23, which is a little bit more draconian than I hope we'll need to go. But if we get that fired on the road and aren't able to do something on plan design and contribution share, by agreement through the IAC, we do reserve the right to go to Section 23, which means it can be done by vote of the select board, changes can be made. The caveat is that whatever the change is, whatever the savings realized by that change are, 25% goes back to the employee groups for health insurance-related purposes. And while that sounds great, that 25% goes back to the employees, if you know that you need to save or realize an economy of X dollars, and you can realize that X by agreement, then that's great, you only need to dig that deeply. If you can't do it by agreement and you know that you go to the next step, you have to dig that much more deeply in terms of plan, design, change, and other things that realize cost savings, because if you need to save X in your budget and 25% of whatever you ultimately save needs to go off budget, it's just a bigger bite you have to be able to take, so. So, 5.5 is great news for the first part of this discussion, but it will be a discussion that will be going on for a number of weeks before we hear the end of it.
I think making, really having continuous conversation with all the groups involved really benefits everyone, not only the town but the employees themselves.
The one piece I'll add on that is, while the law requires that the IAC be comprised of members of unions, it's been my practice in the past to have a representative of the non-unionized employees sit as well. And while there's no legal authority for that, and there's really not a right for that person representing those people to vote, it's just as good, a good practice and as a matter of policy and equity, I think it's a good place to be, so it would be my intention to do the same here. Next, a very minor issue, but something that just needs some clarity. The board took a vote a while back, within the last nine months or so, regarding mileage reports. And we have a number of public taxpayer-funded vehicles that are out and about, some of which, from a contractual perspective, are allowed to be used after hours and for personal use. And it's always good business, and the auditors, if they've not yet said, should have said, that keeping track of that mileage is a very important thing to do. So, you did take a vote to require people with municipal vehicles to submit monthly mileage reports. The types of reports I've seen coming in are, for lack of a better word, they're a little silly. They're, they list the date and how many times did you commute that day, one. With no mileage, no, other than the commute miles, no detail on, I went from point A to point B. Anybody that's been in the private sector and has had the benefit of a vehicle, you know, when you get in the car, old school, you pick up the clipboard and you write the date and where you're starting from and what the mileage is and where you're going, what the ending mileage was, and at the end of the month you have your record. Now, there are things, I mean, I just was sharing with Jody, I think I sent her a text this weekend, there's an app, if you have an iPhone, that actually does it for you. So, as soon as you get in, you hit it and it starts, and it will calculate how far you've gone, and at the end you hit done, and it runs the report for you. So, it's not rocket science, but it's just, in order to clean up what I think was your intention, and to make it actually be worth what it's supposed to be, I'll be rolling out another form. It's one, actually, I think I found Carolyn, that you had worked on a little while ago. So, we'll dust that off, update it a little bit, and get that back out to the folks that are affected.
Yeah, just check with the account to see what she requires. Does this one go towards mileage stipends, however, though, right?
No.
This is just town vehicles and...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And there's no reason that, if there's an employee that, in their personal vehicle, is putting in for mileage reimbursement, that they wouldn't use this form as well. So, if we have somebody, for instance, I know that, if somebody at the water department comes down to drop off, you know, documents, they put in for mileage from point A to point B, there's no reason that this same form, just for consistency, wouldn't be used there. So, I think it's applicable across the board for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, you have the supervisory union. The American Federation for State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, represents a number of groups in town already, and several months ago, employees at the supervisory level engaged with AFSMI around the prospect of creating a supervisory union. There were a number of positions that were originally contemplated to be included in that union, and the way the process works, the potentially effective employees will sign cards of interest, and if a certain number of cards are signed that equal a percentage, a certain percentage of the total potential group, it then goes to the Labor Relations Commission, the Department of Labor Relations. And the town then has a choice to voluntarily recognize the group or to take it to a full hearing before the Labor Relations Commission and debate the merits of each position and whether it should or shouldn't be included in a collective bargaining group. The general rule is positions that are confidential. So, for instance, the executive assistant to the select board is considered statutorily a confidential employee, would not be a union position. The...
I think the police...
The town accountant would not be, statutorily would not be, because the level of confidential and managerial nature of the position and the fact that all collective bargaining proposals are run through the town accountant for costing out of all the benefit proposals. So, there are certain positions that are obvious, there are others that are debatable, depending on which community you're talking about and what the practice is in the community by position. I'm happy to report that you allowed this matter to be handled through mediation instead of going to the full Labor Relations Commission hearing. I think it could easily have gone to hearing, and it would have created, I think, a lot of acrimony. I think it would have definitely incurred a greater level of expense than was necessary. But we were able to sit down, and I think the mediator was pleased to not have to speak, because Jim Michael D'Amio, the business agent for AFSMI, and I have a relationship, we know one another from, you know, other places and other years. We were able to work through the list and be very reasonable with one another. I was able to then bring that back to you for your consideration, and you voted to support it. That petition now has officially been executed by the parties. It will be posted this evening, which is one of the requirements of the law, so that will go up on the bulletin board this evening. But the net result of the supervisory bargaining unit now will be, according to this notice of voluntary recognition. The town hereby notifies all persons that the town of Townsend intends to grant exclusive recognition without an election to the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, as the exclusive representative for the purpose of collective bargaining pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 150E, for the following unit of employees: Water Department Superintendent, Health Administrator, Building Commissioner, Land Use Coordinator, Cemetery Park Superintendent, Principal Assessor, Council on Aging Director, Facilities Manager, and Recreation Director, excluding all other employees of the town. And the notice will be posted for 20 days, and it's been signed by the three members of the select board. So, of that group, that's a, it's a fair group, it's a reasonable group, all things considered in terms of what you look at, in terms of supervisory, managerial, confidential. There are a number of employees that were petitioned for that were not, at the end of the mediation discussion, included in this group, for those very reasons, they were confidential and managerial. So, I know that people have been following this closely, not necessarily with all of the information, because it's a process that's done in executive session, so you're not allowed to speak to it. So, I hope that the public will be pleased to hear that this matter was done voluntarily. It was done by agreement, unanimous agreement of the board, and that's now behind us, we can start negotiating a contract.
Thank you.
Let's get your hands full, Jim, with all the contracts.
An additional piece of information that I think is worth note for two reasons. One, for what it represents in terms of commitment to employees, and another for, I think, probably even more importantly, how it reflects on a particular employee and their ability to recognize something in the midst of chaos that is a good thing, and recognizing the people that allowed it. I think it takes a big person to do that, so I just want to read this to you, because there's been a lot of discussion about police matters in the short time that I've been around, and particularly, there was a lot of discussion around the interim chief's position and whether or not an existing employee, the second-in-command, should or shouldn't take the position, or should or shouldn't be considered as the permanent. I've had the ability to have discussion with the second-in-command of the position in the department, the lieutenant, about his perspective on, given all that's occurred, his readiness or his thinking on the matter today versus several months ago. And I just want to read this, because interim chief Barrio approached me about the prospect of setting up an opportunity for the lieutenant to attend a pretty significant bit of training. This is a national command training program, and I know you've, not you in total, but some of you, as members of this board, have taken some heat over the issue of whether or not, well, let me just say it, I mean, there are comments about whether or not a position or a person is ready yet, or whether there's additional training that could help them become ready. And the wheels have come off a lot of this process since then, and it's been pretty ugly. And if you believe, if you believe what the general theory on the street is, because it's gotten so ugly, you would have to believe that some of the members of this board would dig in and say, "I'm getting beat up on this thing, so to heck with it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put my neck out there on anything." To your credit as members of the board, when Rock came to you and said, "Through me. This is an opportunity for the lieutenant, and we should equip our people to do the job we put them in, and we should equip our people to become best ready to take the next seat if and when the opportunity comes up, and this is that thing for the lieutenant," and he strongly recommended that you allow it. Now, there's an expense. The budget and the police department is in trouble, there's no question. But we get tricked oftentimes to think of things in terms of the cost and not the investment. And, you know, it's easy to see that this is a cost of $3,500, for which there's a $2,000 scholarship, which is great news, but it's still $1,500 when the budget's in trouble. I would suggest that we...
Excuse me, can I just say one point?
I think it's inappropriate this time.
Is there a different budget for training in the department? Or is that different?
We wait until the employees recognize, please.
Lynn, let him finish.
Lynn Giacotti?
Lynn, let him finish, and then if you want to ask a question, it's fine, it's okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. I forgot where I was.
The budget for training. No, that's okay, you can ask in just a moment, just let him finish.
Right, that the, you know, that $1,500 in a budget that's in the condition it is could have been an impediment to doing the right thing here, but it wasn't. So, that's the part about, I think, Rock recognizing what's necessary. You, notwithstanding any of the other things that may be impacting your thinking personally, you didn't like it in the way of doing what's the appropriate thing to do for an employee. The last part I wanted to focus on, I said, is oftentimes you don't get the other side of the issue, which is the employee recognizing when something has been done that's fair and just and appropriate. And I think to the lieutenant's credit, he did write a letter, and I just want to make certain that people at home get to hear this, because it's important, I think, because so many people want, want the narrative to be that there's so much bad blood that people aren't working together, but that's not what's happening in real time. And I think this is an example of it, so. It reads, "Dear Townsend Board of Selectmen, I'd like to take the opportunity to give thanks to those that have made this training opportunity possible in order for me to attend the 76th Command Officers Development Course offered by the University of Louisville, Kentucky. My sincere thank you goes to Chief Barrio for advocating and recognizing the need for this training. I'd also like to thank Mr. Kreidler for presenting this in such a way as to highlight the available scholarship that ultimately made this endeavor possible. I am most thankful, however, to the Townsend Board of Selectmen for making this training opportunity a reality. I believe that by investing in me through this training, not only will it develop me professionally, but also personally. I'm sure the rigorous program will stretch my mind and at the end will make me a better officer and a better leader. The skills learned and passed on will no doubt enhance this agency and benefit the community we serve. Again, thank you for allowing me to attend this course, and I will do my due diligence to not disappoint. Sincerely, Lieutenant Mark Giacotti." So, I think it's important for people to hear these things, because this is what I experience day-to-day, is this type of cooperation, notwithstanding the shots that are being fired overhead. People in this building, people in the other buildings in the government are doing the work. They're doing the right thing. They're trying, sometimes it's hard, you know, in the environment, but they're doing the right thing at the end of the day. And I think Rock deserves credit, you deserve the credit, the lieutenant deserves a great deal of credit, and I just wanted to make certain that that opportunity didn't pass without letting people know.
I got, the lieutenant emailed me that, and I thought it was very, very thoughtful of him, but I said this board has always been committed to employee training. We've had many discussions, it's on the top of our goals, so I was thrilled that he was able to take that opportunity and we could afford it within the budget that, you know, with the issues we're having, but the smart investments in investing in new people and training is one of them.
Ms. Giacotti?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn.
Was that approved initially? The request?
I don't know what you mean by initially.
Was it approved initially by Pam over?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. This is, it just went through the last warrant, which is why it's now current.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
My husband is a class act. Yes, he is, absolutely.
I don't know that I've heard anybody say anything to the contrary.
Absolutely.
That was happy, it was really thoughtful of him to send that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Kreidler, for the prompt.
Sure, moving along. On the discussion of employees and people trying to do the job, again, some of the narrative out and about publicly is that there's open warfare in the building, that, you know, people are living every day in fear. I grant you that I am new, and I grant you again that I'm painted by your brush because you hired me. So, I know, I'm not silly enough to think that people are going to show me their cards completely. Why would they? You know, they've, and oftentimes, been here for decades and I'm two months. But I can tell you, I've been, I've been around 25 years in municipal government, and I've seen hostile work environments, I've seen places where it is so thick in the air that it's uncomfortable, and you get a knot in your stomach walking in. I've not seen that, I've not felt it. I've not, I've not gone looking for it directly, to be quite honest, because I don't want to be that obvious, because that puts people on edge. But I've done my part to be around the building and to be around people, and my judgment is that people aren't in fear. Having said that, I want to say this publicly, because while it's known publicly, it should be restated, if people are in fear of working here, in fear for losing their job, in fear of saying or doing something that's going to put them or their families in jeopardy, they should know that there are places that they can go. And that doesn't mean me, although obviously I would make myself available, but again, who am I? But the select board put a good tool, the red flag program in place. I know Carolyn, you worked on this quite a bit. The, you know, the fact is that there is an anonymous way for employees to report things that are happening in their job that are untoward, and they can do it anonymously, they can do it with as much or as little information as they feel comfortable doing. That information goes to, financially, it first goes outside of this building, it goes to the auditors, but on things that are not financial, it goes to the town administrator and to the town accountant. The fact is that you're getting out of the building with the auditors at least, if I'm not to be trusted or if the accountant's not to be trusted, there's still an opportunity to find a place to speak, that then there is a record, it's, there's an electronic imprint on it, and it must be responded to per the protocol that the board put in place.
I also had, we also took a vote to have it forwarded to Labor Council as well, so it's the town administrator, the town accountant, and Labor Council, as well as our auditors.
Can I be recognized?
Could you let him finish and then...
How do you get on the agenda? How do, how are you able to speak and ask concerns?
Okay, that's, that's a separate...
And ask concerns?
I will let you answer, ask him a question pertaining to this subject matter when he gets finished. Interrupting isn't helpful, Lynn.
All right.
Okay.
Obviously, we have an employee assistance program as well. If people are feeling, if people are feeling in fear, if people are feeling concerned to the point that their health, their physical or mental well-being is impacted, which again is, depending on what circles you're running in the community in the short time I've been here, some of that is the discussion. We have an EAP, an employee assistance program, where you have access to confidential resources, and these don't cost... And these don't cost you any money as an employee. You have a number of sessions of services available to you. And I'd encourage people to also refresh themselves with that. Toward that end, I will make certain that something gets out tomorrow that puts the Red Flag information back out in front of every employee, as well as the EAP information back out in front of every employee. My expectation is that it won't be used, but on the off chance that somebody feels they need to use it, I'd feel better knowing that we've at least refreshed it and put it to the top of the pile again for people.
Well, I know Andy had a department head meeting and an employee meeting and explained it, but I don't know if we ever had training. Part of the package that we purchased allowed them to come out and train the employees. I think that was more for not employment claims per se, like discrimination things, but that was more for just policy and fraud and issues. Is there maybe if we could touch base with them and see if that's still-
I'd be happy to.
Because I think he just had a department head employee meeting, and I don't think there was any training involved.
And while the program is, in its original design, it's meant for financial issues, for fraud concerns, we've got the system in place, and there's nothing that says we can't use it for the things that we want to use it for, which is what the board did, I believe, by taking the extraordinary step of saying it goes to Labor Council.
Yeah. Well, and it does have that discrimination and the confidential service there too, because it's preventative. You know what I mean? You can't address issues if you don't know about them, so.
Before I leave that subject and address Ms. Giancotti, I mean, I don't think anybody is naive enough to think that in every job we're ever going to hold, we're going to love more than life itself, getting up and coming to work. That's not realistic. But we shouldn't fear it. And I just, I've got very little to lose as a short timer by saying these things. But we need to be certain that if it exists, we give people an opportunity to find a safe way to express it. But having said that, if it's not being expressed, given the fact that there are avenues, then we need to stop saying that it exists, because it's difficult to disprove a negative. And when we create the specter that it's a hostile place to be, and there's not the "then what," we're left with just, "Wow, it must really be a hostile place to be." And that's not helpful for the employees, because I've had an employee say, "I often wonder who it is that's feeling so put upon." So you get employees that start to wonder themselves, "What am I missing? What is going on? What is the threat? Am I next?" And then you create another whole layer of this thing, and it gets away from you pretty quickly. So my hope is that people realize there are avenues, and that if they are feeling aggrieved in any way, that they take it up. Through the chair, if I may, Ms. Giancotti?
How do you get on the agenda?
I think, Madam Chair, if I may, there are a couple of things that-
I would like to direct that to Carolyn Smart, because I have come to you.
I understand, that's the distinction I was going to draw, is what we're talking about, if I may, Madam Chair, what we're talking about are employees. If employees have grievances, if you're a union employee, you have a grievance procedure, it's codified in the contract. If you're not a union employee, we put these other things in place to give people an avenue to go.
Well, now that maybe people might know that, maybe they would. That's great.
And I think in fairness-
And I hope they do. I really hope they do.
I do as well. And without getting into a dialogue necessarily, people have known this, the EAP is a part of everybody's employment packet, the Red Flag, I know that there was dissemination of the information and the cards to all employees. I just want to refresh it, because I think that's-
Awesome. I think that's awesome to put it out there.
It's good periodically to put it back on the top of the pile. But in terms of how to get on the agenda, that's a different discussion than what we're talking about. We're talking about how employees feel that they have the ability to express themselves if they're feeling under undue pressure, or they're feeling uncomfortable in the workplace. Getting them the agenda is, again, it's a board prerogative, and one of the policies that is being worked on in the overall packet of board policies-
I just don't understand, if there is questions and concerns, why not just answer them?
From what I understand-
I mean, I want you to be able to speak back, I want Mr. Clark to be able to speak back, I want you guys to have that opportunity too. But as a private citizen of this community, I have a right to ask questions. I have gone through all the appropriate channels to ask about my concerns, and I have been shut down. And I want to know why. I want to know why.
You and I have-
I want, I, I'm sorry. I'm addressing this smart.
I never communicated with you, this was something you communicated with Jim about, so he's going to address it.
You make the decision.
Madam Chair, we have the town administrator.
No, actually, he makes the decision.
Carolyn Smart, you are the chair. You make the decision. I asked to be on the agenda four weeks in a row.
Okay, that's enough.
I asked to be on the agenda, and I have not been able to get on the agenda.
I'd be happy to address this, Ms. Giancotti.
And I have been very respectful in the back and forth, and I didn't feel there was any more need to communicate with you after I spoke with the Attorney General's Office. I don't even need to address what it is. I have a concern.
All right, all right.
I got to say, hold on.
No, 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 sorry. No, no, no.
I'm going to, because you know what?
No, that's enough, Steve.
No, here's the situation.
Steve, I'm going to ask you to sit down.
No, because I know you don't do this.
No, serious, that's enough.
You guys don't do this.
Sit down.
Why?
That's enough.
Look, Mr. Clark, he can do his TA report, and he can turn around and address the policy-
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we go into recess at this time.
And again, this is what you do. This is what you do. Hi.
This process and policies and protocol, bullying your way into here isn't helping anything.
Okay, but you know what? You don't want to answer questions.
Mr. Kreidler is going to sit down.
She's asking you.
I wasn't involved with it.
Madam Chair. You were involved in mine, and you denied mine.
Steve?
There you go.
Steve, I'd be happy to continue to talk, and to the extent that members of the board want to chime in, I think that's great. But standing up and asserting yourself, that isn't helpful, because-
You used your TA report, Jim, to basically combat the combat, to talk about what's going on out the town. If there was a problem-
Absolutely, absolutely, I do.
Okay, but you know what? When do we get to speak? When do we get our questions answered? You don't, because you use your report to say what they want to say, because they can't say it themselves.
I take exception to that.
I'd have no problem saying it.
Then get me on the agenda.
Madam Chair, Mr. Kreidler was trying to speak about four minutes ago to a-
Get me on the agenda.
You asked me to talk about things that we're not allowed to talk about. We're under the advice of council.
Because I haven't seen the legal opinion, and I have the legal bills.
Did you send him the legal opinion, Jim?
It's not engaged, please.
No, he didn't. You denied me in a letter to myself. Get me on the agenda. If you want to talk, put me on the agenda, and you can answer the questions from the 1124 meeting.
Okay, that's enough, Steve, that's enough. Did you send him the legal opinion?
I'm not certain which one that is.
The one-
Except of everything that he's asked for.
I didn't ask for the legal opinion.
You just said-
I have the legal bills, and I did not see it on the legal bills, any opinion where you can talk.
About when he asked us to be on the agenda, what David Jenkins had said, did you send him that legal opinion? Why we couldn't do it?
If he was-
I didn't request it, because I didn't see anything. Madam Chair, please.
Well, let's, let's-
Mr. Kreidler tried to address something five minutes ago.
Lynn, I feel what you're saying, Lynn, and I know that you've spoken to the Attorney General's Office, and they will say, generally speaking, as a matter of public policy, you have-
It's the right thing.
Please let me speak.
It's the right thing. You're addressing me, I'm addressing you. I want to address Carolyn Smart, the chair.
Well, the first step to get on the agenda, Lynn, is you go to the town administrator. He sets the agenda.
I did that.
And he makes the decision.
I asked four weeks in a row, and we went back and forth, you needed more information, you needed it.
But he told me you put it on the agenda.
I have the final say on the agenda. He prepares the agenda, and he puts the appointments on there.
Mrs. Mueller was in there with me.
When I heard from you guys back in November, I put you on the first available one. You had specific things you wanted to talk about, we discussed them.
I was on that.
And now we like to follow up to them.
Madam Chair, can we go back to the agenda, so we can do the appropriate-
Yes, we can. And I have a, hold on, two different issues.
Get your facts straight. It is two different issues. I requested four weeks in a row, I have all the emails, to be put on the agenda. Yes, he called me, and then he wanted me to come back in, and I said, "I don't feel there's no need to come back in." I have my concerns as a private citizen to ask what I want to ask, when it's concerning me personally.
So did you want to respond to her?
I would love to respond if she would allow me.
Please do.
What I've attempted twice, now you've overreached me.
It is Carolyn Smart. It is not, I, you told me she denied me.
You're talking about me.
You said she denied me on the agenda. I have the email.
Most certainly, that is accurate.
Right. So why, so what, Jim? So why can't she answer? I don't need to talk to you, I need to talk with her.
Because I'm not aware of what occurred up to that. You know what? This isn't about what you want. Jim is going to respond to her.
But she's telling-
Stop interrupting him, Steve, stop.
You're not my mother, so don't tell me that.
Well, then we can ask you to leave.
For what reason?
For being disruptive in a public meeting.
Go ahead.
Wait until the board has drawn a order here, please.
No, I think we need to address this. Go ahead, Jim.
You didn't need to come back in, you're absolutely right to speak with me. And I made it clear in our writings that I wasn't interested in you speaking any further, but there was something additional that I really felt you needed to hear. You could have done it by phone call, I made that clear in our writing. Please. The request you made was to make a complaint, correct?
It wasn't to make a complaint, it was to address a concern about-
I believe your writing, I have it, if you'd like me to read it.
It was to address a concern, and please don't twist it.
I want to be clear, Lynn.
Please don't twist it.
A complaint is a very specific word in legal-
When my name is brought up as part of an investigation, I have every right to ask why.
Your name was, you were never part of, you were never part of an investigation.
Chief Demora called me.
Well, I don't know what to say about that.
Chief Demora called me, okay? Chief Demora called Lynn Giancotti. Did he lie? Did I make that up?
Yes, he did.
If he told you, if he told you he was directed by Carolyn to investigate you, then he did not, that's what you told me.
It could have been, maybe it was, did Gordon Clark know about it?
Gordon wasn't in the room.
Did Gordon Clark know about it?
You want to do this, let's do it. You said that Demora called you and said that he is investigating you at the direction of town council? That's what you wrote, Lynn.
No, was directed by legal counsel.
And Carolyn-
Why is my name coming up, though?
It was not.
Why?
It's never been, it's never come up.
Okay, so my name is brought up.
Don't go down this road.
What about clever clippers? Did he make up clever clippers?
No, that's real.
Okay.
It's absolutely real. The issue wasn't about you, Lynn.
So how would Chief Demora know about clever clippers? This is really, this is crazy.
Yeah, I agree.
Here's the thing, what's going to happen, let me forecast for you.
You're trying to make Chief Demora look bad, and I get that, but you know what?
I don't need to do that, he can take care of himself. The issue is this, there was an executive session, the minutes have not yet been released. Much to the credit of people that were in the room that day, there's an audio recording, okay? What I wanted to tell you-
Mr. Jenkins never spoke to Chief Demora.
Please let me finish. Please let me finish. What I wanted to tell you, Lynn, is please don't go down this road, because you are wrong. There was no direction ever given. The issue was raised, but no direction was ever given.
Right, it was raised, that is a concern, people. It's a concern.
No, ma'am.
Why, yes, it is a concern, nothing happened, but it's a concern that my name came up.
Your name was not raised. The issue was raised. The issue was raised, and there was audio proof of this discussion, which is all I wanted to tell you. I wanted to say, please don't go down this road, because there's audio-
I'm going to go down, I have a right as a citizen, when somebody brings up my name.
They did not. That's all I wanted to tell you.
Okay.
I wanted to tell you that it wasn't that at all. But you already posted it. It is online for the world to see, never to be taken down, that Carolyn Smart directed an investigation into you personally.
That is what I was told.
Well, now you're at risk. What I wanted to tell you is, when you say things like that, they have real meaning, and real recourse can be had. You put yourself at risk by saying something that is not true.
We don't know that not to be true.
I have an audio tape.
We don't know that not to be true.
I have an audio tape.
So I don't know how that would have-
You told me.
I don't know how that would have just come up out of nowhere, Lynn Giancotti.
You told me, no, you said, "Do you have the bill?" I said, "Yes." You said, "Look at December 3rd, there's a meeting." I said, "I haven't looked, let me look." I found it. You said, "There it is right there." At that meeting on that day, my name was raised.
And that was not absolutely clear. Marcy, you were in the room with me.
That's exactly what you said.
Marcy, you were in the room with me.
That's exactly what you said.
I know how you're trying to twist this, and I don't want to go there, okay?
Do you want to read, do you want to read that back into the record?
Yes, sir.
The point being is, every citizen has a right to get on the agenda. Everybody has a right to ask questions. He's answering for you.
My job-
You're answering his job.
My job for the Charter is to protect the town from liability. That's my job, okay?
I understand.
When I see a situation that's developing that is going to create liability for the town, I must intercede. That's in the Charter.
But why didn't anybody, anybody speak back to me? Nobody did.
Lynn, how many times did I reach out at the end?
I do not feel comfortable, keep going back in there with you. I do not feel comfortable.
Then I can't help you.
I'm sorry. I don't feel comfortable.
I think it'd be worth it to read that letter into the record from David again.
Certainly.
I read it.
Dear Mr. Kreidler, please accept this correspondence as status report with respect to my involvement in the police department concerning the potential release of confidential employee information in early December of 2015. I received a telephone call from Attorney Catherine O'Leary complaining, among other things, that confidential information concerning her client, an employee of the town of Townsend, had been released in a public manner. On the basis of that information received, release of the information likely came from a police source. On December 3rd, 2015, I, along with Ms. Smart, met with interim police chief Robert Demora and advised him that confidential information concerning one of his employees had been publicly disclosed. I, David Jenkins, instructed the interim police chief to make inquiry of police personnel with respect to the unlawful disclosure. At no time during the meeting of December 3rd, 2015, or any time thereafter, did I or Ms. Smart instruct the interim police chief to make any inquiry of any potential civilian witness. The interim police chief never reported the results of the inquiry of his police personnel that had been directed. If you need further information, please let me know sincerely, David Jenkins.
Does that put an end to your concerns, Lynn?
No.
Well, then, I don't know what to tell you.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. All right, Mr. Kreider. Will you continue on?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Kreider. Can we go back to the work, please?
Um, yes.
Section 2 Financial Reports. We received a letter just this weekend from Sean Cronin, the Associate Commissioner of the Department of Revenue, specifically regarding the fact that the form known as the Schedule A, which is a required form that every municipality must submit to the Department of Revenue by the end of the calendar year, has not yet been submitted on our part. And the concern that they have is significant enough that they have forecasted withholding our local aid payment for the end of March. And I've spoken with the town accountant, whose responsibility it is to finalize that paperwork, now that she has all of the information that she had previously been lacking from the treasurer collector's office, and she expects that she should be able to meet their deadline without us having the payment withheld. The, um, the reason I bring this up is, is twofold. Number one, because it's serious. It's not very often that you get a letter from the Associate Commissioner of the Department of Revenue saying that they're going to withhold your local aid payment. But equally importantly, I think, so the public is aware that there's been a great deal of work that was required to have been done that was not done. And there's no need to, to talk about individuals who had responsibility to get it done, but the people need to be reminded of the fact that we are in a bad way. This letter from the Department of Revenue is just the most recent outside indication of that condition. I think it would be unfortunate for people to come to learn that such a letter exists or that such a possibility as having our local aid withheld exists without having had the context provided as to why that letter exists. So I think anybody that drove by this weekend would have seen Terry in here. Terry's a 25-hour employee. She's been putting in well in excess of, of 40, sometimes 50, uncompensated, to get work done that she should have been allowed to do over the course of business with the normal ebbs and flow of town finances. The last thing I want anyone to come away with the impression of is that Terry is in any way responsible for the fact that the report that goes out under her signature is not yet done because she could not do the report without the information that she now is just finally getting. So I wanted to make the board aware of that and make certain the public was aware as well.
I got the email from DOR late Friday night. Were you able to talk to the working group? Is that going to be under the, did you guys get a chance to discuss that?
We, we did talk about it in the working group, and that's when, when Terry was able to say that she's, she's hopeful that she'll be able to get to it without, we did talk about on the off-chance that there is a withholding of the March 31st local aid payment and how are we on cash flow. And given the fact that excises come during that same time period, that from a cash flow perspective, even though we would not lose the local aid, if it's, worst case, if it's delayed, we still have cash flow sufficient with our other revenues coming across the threshold to continue to do our business.
I'm sure you remember last fall, we were asking when the reconciled accounts would be done because Terry had all this work to do. Do you know when Susan was actually able to get her the reconciled accounts and, and her able to do the journals?
As of last week, mid to late week, they finished all of the reconciliation. And what Terry was here this weekend doing was all the journal entries.
So it shouldn't take too much-
So now it's, it's, it's basically input into the, I mean, you know, the Schedule A isn't multi-page. It's not an easy, it's a typical state form.
She says there's a number of, much more than just a number of journal entries to do. But there's a number of different reports and schedules that all, one connects, in order to get to this one, you have to do this one, which connects to that one, and this one. And it's a lot of debits and credits to get over to where we need to get, to get this form completed. So she's, she does still have quite a bit of work to do, but she's really working hard, very hard to get that.
And she is, and I, and, you know, I appreciate it.
And we are, I mean, excise, the excise, I got mine, but excise taxes are due towards the end of this month, so everybody get them paid on time and be gone.
Now Suzanne, is she done helping Barbara transition?
She's got to go probably the rest of this week.
Okay.
And then she should be, Barbara should be standing on her own.
I'd really like the board to send her a thank you letter. She-
We need to recognize her efforts.
Yeah, she's been a love to work with, and she's really worked hard down there.
And, and she did make it clear that even though it won't be on the clock, she'll make herself available for Barbara off into the future for questions that might come up.
Real professional.
Along those lines, the working group. The board did select a member. It works out that Cindy is going to be that member and has attended the first meeting of the finance working group. It's, it's modeled not unlike your revenue projection group that you've had in years prior. So we have a member of the FinCom, Don Klein, as the chair is sitting. We have Cindy representing the select board. I'm in. Terry's in. Vicky Tidman's in from the assessors, and we do have Barbara Tandy, the collector treasurer. So we had our first meeting just yesterday morning. And looking at the, the unusual situation, given the fact that 15's not closed and here we are in mid-March, that 16 is more than halfway through, coming on three-quarters of the way through, and we have deficits to address, which we're confident we have addressed, all things considered. And then 17, we're normally well into the, the fine tuning of 17 or the fiscal year budget at this point, at least in, in my experience. I'm not certain Townsend's experience, how the timeline works generally, but by, by early mid-March, we should be well underway on the next fiscal year. But we're flying in the dark because you build a budget prospectively based on your expected revenues. Your expected revenues are determined based on what your prior revenue actuals have been. We know what 15's were because we've finally been able to close out. We have no idea what 16's are because while we've been chasing ourselves on 15, we don't yet have anything recorded in terms of the revenues across the threshold for 16. So we know what the revenue projection was, and we're presuming that it's going to be a legitimate estimate. We have no reason to believe it won't, but we don't know because we don't have those numbers reconciled yet because we had to finish 15. So 17, what we've got in these binders here, and these are, these are big fat binders with very little in them, and that's by design. My expectation is over the next several weeks, these binders will fill for you. But on a very simplistic level right now, what you have in here is a spreadsheet that I put together that will be emailed to you this evening, so you'll have it electronically to be able to, to work with yourself. It takes every budget from the selectmen's budget all the way through to property liability and vehicle insurance at the end and everything in between. It lists the current year, the requested. So this is raw requests. This has not been filtered in any fashion. So if somebody wishes for a pony and a piñata next year and they put it in their budget, it's here. This is, this is a fiction. I mean, everybody should recognize that going in, that what you have here is not what the end of the day is going to look like, but you should see what's been asked for. Additionally, Jody will be putting together the scan of all of the department's narratives. So those that have substantial budgets that provide a narrative saying, "This is why I put two new positions in and why I think it's warranted," you'll have the benefit of their narrative as well. At the end of this document, you'll see that against last year's approved budget, looking at this year's requests, we go from last year's total, including integration, $19,213,190. So 19-2 was last year's budget. We're now looking at $20,154. So almost a million dollars, just shy of a million dollars higher in the requests that exist. Now, some of them are legitimate. We know that the education assessment for the VoC has gone up by 110,000. We know that as of today, roughly 320,000 for the regional high school. That's subject to change. As you know, at the joint meeting we attended last week, week and a half ago, the school committee, the regional school committee is working to reduce their total budget, which would then correspondingly reduce everybody's assessment. I did speak with the superintendent today, and they've got it down by approximately 500,000 already over what they had a week and a half ago. So that will translate to a lower assessment for us. We don't yet know that number. They were supposed to certify a budget last night, but they did not. In their meeting, they did not certify because the folks from PAPR are still pushing very hard to have further cuts made, particularly because PAPR this year in their assessment is seeing an increase of a million dollars. So they have a, they have a far bigger sticker in the game here than we do this year.
They really came out in the lead at that, that meeting, explaining the situation they're in. And I know Ashby has a structural deficit of about 100,000, they said, so it's nice to see all the towns communicating with the schools to let them know the situation we're in, even though we didn't have a lot of data to share with them.
I think the-
Now, you're, you said approximately a million, so if you're only allowed to go up under two and a half, about 350 plus your new growth.
450. Call it with, with a wink and a prayer, a half million bucks. Yeah, we're half out if all things hold.
All things hold, if our revenue projections for 16 are correct. So that's, you guys have some work.
We do.
I, I think that it'll come in together.
Focus on finance working group.
Yeah.
Working very hard on it.
Working.
I mean, I think-
And I think the state, oh, speaking of that, the compact with the budget, budget projections, is that-
Actually, I've got that after this.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go to the compact after this. Couple of other things that are in here, obviously the health insurance, there's a big click in there, that, that 55, 60 grand click. We have several areas where there have been mid-year budget adjustments made. Facilities is one. That's held true in here. So when you look through this, I, I think you'll see the things that'll stand out. I think the value of having the end column showing a dollar variance and a percentage variance are good keys to be able to kind of cheat your way through where the big hits are. So this is, it's a form that I've used for years, and I just rolled Townsend's data into this form just because I think it's a pretty simple way to see things. When you look at the VEDAR budget, you have numbers that are appearing three times in a row, and the system understands what they mean. It's the same number that-
Back it out, turn it, back it out.
Yeah. If you're not familiar with it, you can get lost pretty quickly. This, I think, is, is as crayola or a, a level as you'll get. I'd be happy to do anything differently that you want with it, but as a starter, I thought you might appreciate seeing it this way. So I do have a book for each of you on that for this point.
Now, do we have all the department budgets?
What you have in there is in the requested column, you have everybody's actual requests.
Thank you.
And then the narratives that'll be coming will be everybody's list that they, that they covered their, their budgets with defending why it is they were putting in, the things they were putting in.
It's real simple. It follows our new numbers within the VEDAR and our budget at our town meetings.
Yeah, there are a couple of areas that, that were curious to me, you know, why we have a separate budget for, you know, the $59, whatever the heck it is, there's one random little budget for $59, another one for-
He goes parking clerk or something like that?
Parking clerk, and then there's a $160 one for keeper of burials or something.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like, with your permission, to, to actually combine several of the areas that are really under one department head and are all the same, the same types of function, but for whatever reason, they're, they're spread out all over the place. You could really, I think, streamline it. Still show every line item with the same detail, but at least have it in the appropriate place.
Thank you for working on this.
See, we'll get an email of that.
Reading it over tonight.
The, um, there, there exists in the file a revenue worksheet that Andy had put together, his very, very preliminary 17 projected revenues. I'll be forwarding that along to members of the working group as well. There, there are several assumptions in here that I think are worthy of, of taking a look at. Local aid, for instance, Andy was very conservative on the local aid because this happened well before the governor put the budget out. So even in House One, we'd see about 75 grand more than is here. So I think there are, there are areas in here that I think you'll have a better appreciation for because you're familiar with this form more than I've been. So I'll make certain that this gets out to the working group and to members of the select board as well.
Did you have the projections that were worked on last year, the revenue projections? I think they did bring it out a year, didn't you? So I remember.
It looks like this is, this was dated 9/21, and several of the areas look to be carried out through fiscal year 20.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was brought out.
Yeah. There, there's not detail, but the, the, the total categories for local receipts, local aid, levy, and available funds are run out until fiscal '20.
Actually, just one of 16 projections.
To follow up with your question, Chair, about the, the compact, the town applied for and received community compact consideration from the Commonwealth and have contractability for budget tool and budget documentation. Obviously, that won't happen quickly enough for fiscal '17. But I think using what we've got that you've traditionally used, trying to make it a little simpler to follow because we have a, a very constricted window within which we're trying to get this done now, I think is what we're going to have to do for now. But what they will be coming in is looking at how you've always done things, what best practices are, and what other tools exist from other communities that they can roll out as a modeling tool going forward. The second part of that, as you know, is the, the long-term forecasting, revenue forecasting. And the Collins Institute from UMass Boston is on the state contract for these types of community compact grants. They've actually brought some professional staff in specifically for community compact finance modeling over the last six or nine months. And when I spoke with Ms. Coker at DLS, the granting authority, they've been very pleased with what the Collins Institute has had to offer in terms of service. So I've been in touch with Mr. McGoldrick, the executive director of the Collins Center, and his staff regarding getting them out to scope what the, the grant provides for and make certain that we can get something within the budget that's been made available by the Commonwealth to get this going forward. So within the next two weeks, for your next meeting, we should have that scoped out and, and perhaps even have a representative from UMass Boston, Collins, out here for you for the presentation.
They have an excellent reputation. And just so, you bring, I know we had touched base with it today, or you had told me, yeah, yesterday, that we are going to get the $50,000 earmark that the board's been chasing, what, two or three years, I think, we've been asking for that, wasn't it, Sue? For public safety, the earmark? And it kept getting vetoed. We're actually going to get it, which is really going to help with the police deficit, so.
Yeah. In addition to the 901 grant being able to be pulled forward for this year, that gets us the 35,000. We did get a call from Representative Harrington's office, and kudos to them that they've, they've bird dogged this thing now for three years. It's been in the budget, two prior years have been vetoed. It made it in this year and made it through all the final dangerous points in the, in the process. So it's real and it's available. I did get a writing just yesterday from EOPS, Executive Office of Public Safety, saying that while it was originally scoped to be an amount of money for police radios, an amount of money for the bulletin, electronic bulletin board signs, and an amount for computers, that it actually is written broadly enough that for whatever police public safety purpose. So if there are areas within the existing budget that capital expenditures have occurred that fit within that grant, we're able to apply those to back those expenses out of, out of the, the operating budget and, and fill them with these grant funds. So that's a, that's a letter that'll be going off tomorrow, making the request for the drawdown.
Great.
I, I, thank you. I think that, you know, I, I can appreciate that you're under the gun with, you know, late closings and all of that, but I'm just hoping that the FinCom has all of the budgets so that they can start going through the department budgets, too.
The chair's here.
Well, if you're working on that simultaneously, at least, at least they've got a chance to go through things and get the justifications and all of that while all of the other stuff's being done.
Toward that point to Ms. Lucio, having Mr. Klein as the chair of the FinCom on the working group, we were able to talk about that yesterday because, again, I'm coming in new. I don't know what the FinCom's traditional role has been. I gather that it's been-
Looking very closely at everybody's by the-
It has been that, and then on occasion, it's not. So it's, it's, it's been kind of, you know, a cyclical thing. So what we will be doing is getting out this electronic version, as well as the cover page narratives, to Mr. Klein this evening so he can then disseminate it to all the members of the FinCom. One thing that I want to be respectful of is, again, the lines of communication, that as the chair, he has responsibility for the committee to whom he is responsible. I'll feed him information. He then feeds it out to his committee, so that way there, he is certain that everybody's getting everything at the same time, all the same information.
So Carolyn, everybody's, all of the departments have submitted their budgets?
I haven't seen them. I don't know if they've been submitting them to-
That's, that's what that document reflects, and that's what the narratives that Jody will be putting out this evening, their, their cover sheets will show. All the backup is available, obviously, but the, their numbers exist in this final column as, as requested for fiscal '17.
And I mean, in terms of revenue, it, it doesn't fluctuate that much. The, the things that fluctuate are the things that, I mean, you, you don't have lots of control over the, the big stuff, and the little stuff isn't going to amount to that much anyway.
That's what I was saying, we can only grow 450.
That's what I mean.
So we have, they have a lot of work to do.
You know what your cap is anyway. What you have to deal with is any kind of deficit to come off of it. So, you know, I, I mean, I think, just trying to look at it as glasses half-full, I, I think the Finance Committee is used to doing their work with the department heads, and everybody knows what their cap is going to be, with potential depending on, on deficit or revenue for some to be reduced. So, you, you've got a good start. It's not the first time it's been done.
It's not the first time we had to figure out how to lower 500,000, and we'll get through it.
No.
Yep.
And again, the lasting point is, that $500,000 overage is not real.
It's just requested.
That's not, that's not a real budget that must be cut. That's a wish list that must be pared down.
Exactly.
Well, the other question, normally, in the past, we had always given direction to the department heads for what kind of an increase to look at. What direction did they receive? I haven't heard that.
They actually were given Andy's, his budget memo. He had a budget memo when I arrived that was slated to go out within a matter of days of his having left. So, being new to the game, I put that out.
But what was it?
I think it was 2.5% on wage and expenses level is what went out. So what you'll see when you look at the document, and I'd like to find a way to actually get that posted online on the website. I don't know that we have the ability to get it in an interactive Excel format, but at least as a PDF, so people can see what it looks like in the beginning and each step of the way. But what you'll see is, on the salary lines, everything, with the exception where they've increased employees in their request, you'll see the 2.5%. That's going to be the first thing, it's going to be backed down, quite honestly, because we know that that's not going to be something that, as a first pass, is going to be sustainable. If there's a compelling reason to have to have a second shift in dispatch, for instance, because we have EMD now as a legal requirement, and for at least a swing shift, you really should have two dispatchers on duty, something like that becomes, I would suggest, a priority over whether or not someone's going to get a 2.5% raise on base that divided by 52.2 weeks after taxes is going to be a de minimis impact in their bottom line. But the ability to have public safety functioning at a higher level is a bigger concern, so.
Well, that's not anything unusual either. Having to prioritize between departments sometimes happens, too, so.
Somehow, we make it through it, and we get there to the end.
That's the new, that's not the old.
Okay, thank you.
Moving into project updates, very briefly, Alyssa Drive. The Planning Board has reached out with a request that the Board consider a motion this evening to refer back to the Planning Board the process to accept or to present to Town Meeting the consideration of accepting Alyssa Drive as a public way. So if it please the Board, it would be a memo going back to the Planning Board saying that the Office of the Board of Selectmen received the attached petition, which shall be certified by the Board of Registriars to begin the process of laying out a public way. This letter constitutes official notification to the Planning Board from the Board of Selectmen requesting review of plans and procedures of the construction of Alyssa Drive in accordance with Mass. General Law 4181-G. The Planning Board has 45 days to report to the Selectmen that, number one, the roads were constructed in accordance with the subdivision plans, and bond or covenant has been released and certification granted, or, number two, the roads have not been completed in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations. Please include specific details if there's non-compliance. Thank you, Board of Selectmen. So if it please the Board, just to get the process started, a vote of that as a motion to be sent as a memo to the Planning Board, so they can then respond back to you saying whether one or two is appropriate for Alyssa Drive. If it's one, then there would be consideration for the Board to hold a hearing or a meeting publicly to lay out the road as the interim step before it then goes to Town Meeting for final consideration of acceptance. But the request from the Planning Board is that you send this memo back to them so they can start that process.
There was some confusion. Years ago, we always had the public hearing to vote to lay out the road, once we got a report from the Planning Board. But I understand it's just the Planning Board that has to have the hearing? We don't, we still do?
No, no. You're, you're both going to have, the guidance you've received from Coleman and Page calls it a public meeting.
Okay, so we don't have to have a hearing?
I've always called them public hearings, because you do anticipate taking questions from the audience on the specific concerns. Residents may say, "We need this because it needs to be plowed," or whatever. So whether it's technically a hearing or just a meeting, I don't think is, is, is clear. But it does go to the Planning Board first, so they can answer the specific question, then comes back to you to actually have the layout hearing.
We have enough time for a hearing before Town Meeting, so it'll be fine.
We do.
Do you want to take a stab at that motion?
I have no idea what the motion needs to be.
So moved.
All those in favor?
It's been right into the record, so, so moved.
Thank you for that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll get that letter out tonight to the Planning Board. The next, just by way of update, there, there's a project that has predated my involvement in Town to Capital Project for the, the West Townsend Fire Station. The project contemplates the American Legion Building and the existing Fire Station Building.
There is no more Legion Building?
As of today, there is no more Legion Building. The contracts, having been awarded to bourgeois construction, they did begin today. I received a call from Chief Boynton. He was surprised, he wasn't expecting that they were going to have started yet. So he apologized that he wasn't able to give advance enough notice to the Board before you drove by.
I'm sorry, it was just gone.
One of you particularly, or two of you particularly, who might have driven by and seen the thing down. So he did catch me this afternoon and apologized and wanted me to convey that to you as well, that it's not inconsistent with what has been the plan, but it just happened a little more quickly than he had anticipated. So, that's that piece. The, next is under miscellaneous. The, the bylaw in town indicates that all articles for the warrant must be received by March 1st preceding the annual Town Meeting, which is also spelled out by Charter bylaw. We have a request that has come in from Mr. Barrett regarding a zoning petition that he has been working on with the Planning Board on behalf of a citizen, specifically regarding an overlay district for, for solar power generation. And he wasn't aware, while he was collecting his signatures for the petition article of the March 1st deadline. And he apologizes for that. We spoke this afternoon. And the language does allow the Board to, on behalf of a citizen, put an article on. I know this isn't an article that has actually been before you already, at, two meetings ago, we, we had a discussion about this, this issue and whether or not, whether it was going to reflect spot zoning, whether there needed to be a broader overlay districts applied. Given that it's been on your radar screen, and you've been aware of it, and that Mr. Barrett did collect the requisite number of signatures to do it by petition, but that the date of March 1st has passed, he wanted to ask your consideration of you sponsoring it as a Board, which you have the authority to do. I said that I would present it to you this evening.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Barrett, I told him myself personally, I mean, he just missed a deadline for a few days. I don't have a problem with adding it to the warrant. Whether it'll pass through the Planning Board, whether it'll pass through the AG is not, you know, our issue, it's their issue, but I didn't have a problem with that. Do you have a problem with that?
Um, to my question, I have the new fee structure that we approved a while ago, would that be applicable to this?
No, it's not a solar farm, are they trying for solar? They're just rezoning an overlay district.
Zoning, zoning to allow a project to be built on a piece of land that's not currently allowed.
See, currently, I think we only allow it on town-owned land, if I remember the zoning correctly.
Correct.
And so this would change it to allow it on private land as well, from what I understand.
Correct, and a certain, and a certain overlay district, correct.
And would there eventually, I'm sorry, would there eventually be a solar array there?
There could be. And then those fees would come into play. The town has a solar, a solar generation bylaw that any applicant would need to come before the Planning Board and go through all of those hoops and pay the appropriate fees. But right now, there, there are property owners in a particular area in town that have an interest in doing a project, but the zoning only, as Carolyn said, only allows solar development on municipal parcels.
They're trying to take all the money.
By the way, the AG's office has said it's, it's a questionable practice that you limit to just-
Yeah, well, they tried.
Just town parcels.
Thank you for answering that question.
Just Todd first, Lori, then I'll get to you.
Where are they talking about in general in town?
This is West Meadow Road, some of the open fields that you'll see down there. There's a couple of parcels, I believe, owned by Mr. Craven, or at least business entities that Mr. Craven, Mr. Craven's involved with, and a couple of other parcels as well. One of the points that I've made, Todd, is my concern would be that you go through this entire process, and the Attorney General's office looks back and says, "You've taken just two or three parcels." In effect, looking at it from the 10,000-foot view, it's a spot on the map, which is not lawful in zoning. You can't spot zone.
That, but I'm also worried, there's a couple spots in town I know have been talked about, that are arquebular recharge zones, and in Zone 2 and Zone 1. DEP and EEA have come in and put stricter guidelines of where you can put them. And so you really need to check where those arquebular recharge zones are and where Zone 1 and Zone 2 is.
And again, through the Chair, those would be appropriate discussion points at a Town Meeting, if in fact you get to a Town Meeting, that would either sway or not sway the Assembly that night to, to accept it. You would have to have a map that night to know what parcels you're talking about.
Believe me, I'm the last person to be against solar, but, but there are some legitimate concerns, especially where you're talking about recharges areas and things like that.
To that point, Todd, the Planning Board has to have a hearing process and everything on zoning changes, so there's going to be a lot of probably publication and getting people to submit comments on that, so they can decide whether they want to-
No, I, I just, from my own experience-
Yeah, and this conversation-
The law, the regulations have definitely changed and made it a lot more stringent.
Yeah, and we're actually just talking about getting it on the warrant, we're not talking about the content so much, or, or the merits, or, or lack of merits, or, gee, we don't, we don't want it, that's unfortunately, unfortunately-
But I said, I'm the last person to be against solar.
Have it on Town Meeting floor, yeah.
Operate one, so.
Lori first, and Veronica, if that's okay.
Okay, I just wanted to get a little feedback of last night's meeting, because we met with Mr. Barrett, and actually, we had a full group there. And basically, what it came down to was, we were all in consensus of letting it come out and let the townspeople talk about it. Because when it was first passed, the bylaw was first passed, and it's very narrow, basically, it was done in 2011 with not much information. Basically, the state was mandating that we have a zoning bylaw in place, so actually, they may not even have approved it, because it may have been too restrictive. And so even though this refers to several parcels of land, the Planning Board itself was talking about other areas in town that would be appropriate for this. So because it's town-owned land only, we really need to relook at it as, as updating a bylaw or a zoning, so that it comes into play with what things are like today. In other words, solar wasn't as popular then, or, you know, the energy efficiency wasn't looked at then, and now we need to look at it. So basically, it's just-
Do you know when you would have the hearing? Do you think within the next 30 days?
Within 35 days, we have to have it. So, if he has the petition, I mean, it would help if the Selectmen were in favor of it, and then that would help move that along.
Proceeding with getting another one.
Procedure, yeah. Yeah, no, I think we all, do we need to take a vote? I don't think we need to take a vote.
He was looking for that just because, to chase it down the line, the, the part, the private property owner whose behalf, on whose behalf he's acting, has people that he's dealing with in the private marketplace that need to know whether or not it's likely or not that this is going to happen. He would like to be able to know that he can tell them that it will be on the warrant. He can't say what will happen, but he can't say right now that it'll be on the warrant unless you vote to say that you will sponsor it. So he's looking for that at least. Procedurally, you're approving, but not substantively.
Take a vote in just a moment, I know she had a question. Cut.
Can I talk now?
Yes.
Okay. West Meadow Road, isn't that where, I mean, I certainly do want the pipeline?
Yes.
Isn't the pipeline coming through there?
It's in right in those parcels.
And that's the federal, yeah, right through those. And that, that is out of the town's control, other than getting, saying everything we can ahead of time. So if you have a pipeline coming through there, you couldn't put solar panels there anyway, because the easement, you can't do any development-
Correct.
-on the easement for the pipeline.
The parcel, as I understand now, Chair, the parcels at play are, are large enough that even if you put the, the 100-foot easement, 50 on each side of the pipeline, there'd still be room to do what is, right now, the most, most actively developed solar projects, or 1-megawatt-sized solar projects, which are roughly 4.5 to 5 acres. So they believe that even if the pipeline were to go through, now there was a taking by eminent domain, there'd still be space sufficient outside of that layout to do this type of a project.
Boy, that would look like something.
Yeah.
Considering I live right there, it's awesome.
Yeah. Todd, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Jim, they looked at that the caps are closed right now, and that's dead, that's deadlock, and it's going to be, I was actually at the committee hearing at Public Utilities and-
DUR.
Thank you. To, because I, I represent a bunch of audio utilities that want to build them and do direct use and can't. That argument with the cap is not going to move anytime, so.
One of the, one of the, Madam Chair, if I may, one of the issues, particularly with Unitil, is that you can squeak a 1-meg project in, in Unitil, if the cap gets bumped even a half a percentage point. And that's what they're expecting is going to happen. So they want to just get things teed up, so if the legislature gets out of its own way and pops that thing through, they can make these things happen. So, for Unitil, it makes some sense, in a very discreet spot, to be able to look at a 1-meg project.
So can you entertain a motion?
Hey, I'll make a motion that we allow the article to be placed on the warrant as presented by Mr. Jeff Barrett.
Second.
Ellen, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is all I have. We do have executive session, I will-
What about the Chapter 90 reimbursements?
I apologize, that, that is something that was earlier on the agenda, so yes. Thank you. Jody, you have the Chapter 90 reimbursements there?
Do you have the breakdown, so she can make a motion and vote for them? I guess you're reading them right off of there.
Oh, gosh, all of these?
Well, it's just the reimbursement, so you just, you just want to make a order-
Just the project, project name and the amount.
For the reimbursement and the amount and what road it's on.
Oh, just these two?
Oh, I see, okay.
What am I doing?
You're just going to move to approve the reimbursement in the amount of $18,883 for-
Oh, the, the street, okay.
If you want to read all the streets, that's fine, but-
Oh, I might as well.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the reimbursement-
Chapter 90 reimbursement.
Reimbursement for, oh, well, it says, I'll touch your question, I'm talking to Pia, in the amount of $18,000. $18,883 for Reagan Road, Lorry Drive, Robin Drive, Granite Road, Dick Street, Meadow Road, Fort Shute Drive, and Shirley Road. Do we get a second?
Second.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can sign these after the meeting, if that's okay?
Yeah, just to get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the reimbursement of, uh, Chapter 90 reimbursement, $200,866.64 for work that was completed before the project was signed off for verbal approval, was getting Linda West to proceed with the work. I don't know what this is for.
Mill and Resurfus Brookline Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And these are just the reimbursement requests, we already approved the projects, and the work's been completed, so-
The work's done, yeah.
We're just getting reimbursed for all that work. Did you want to talk about the municipal aggregation? I saw that you had included the proposal in our packet.
Thank you, I apologize, yes.
Not feeling well, I understand.
Thank you for being here, while you're second.
Still trying to come up to speed here. Municipal aggregation, brief update, Town Meeting passed municipal aggregation, which is a program under the laws of the Commonwealth that allows a municipality to sponsor a program through which all of the residents and businesses, private meters, commercial, residential, industrial meters, load, electrical load is aggregated into one bucket, and that bucket is then put out into the marketplace to get a competitive bid. And the project was passed, the framework was passed at Town Meeting, the bid has been placed, the applicants have been received from Colonial Power Group and Peregrine, both of whom going through the procurement rating schedule, rated as highly advantageous on all counts. The, the actual issue comes down to the fact that, on references, Peregrine has been judged to be much more user-friendly in their presentation materials to the community and their outreach. And when you look at the two proposals that came in, when you look at Colonials, and I've known Colonial, in fact, I have a letter of disclosure on file, that they actually were the aggregation consultant in Winchendon, when I worked in Winchendon. They're not, the consultant that I'm recommending in this case, when you look at the two together, Colonial's documentation that would appear in your mailbox to be looked at at your dining room table, looks very much like government language. It's, it's white paper, black ink, and a lot of words, and not a lot of white space. It's the type of thing that you'll see, and you'll think, "I'm not even going to look at this, it's, it's, it's not going to grab your attention." When you look at Peregrine, and you should have seen copies of it in your packets, the information from Peregrine is, they take your website header, color, a lot of space, and very, very simplistically written information with where you can go to get any level of detail that you want beyond that. And the response I've gotten from the communities where they've ruled on aggregation has been that there have been far fewer questions by population that come in from people not understanding what this is. And the response they get back in the surveys they've done is that people got it instantly, they knew what it meant, and they knew what the benefit was to them. So, if it please the Board, I'd like your authorization to award the contract to Peregrine for the community aggregation pursuant to the publicly procured process. And their rate of compensation, which would be coming from the ultimate provider, the supplier of the electricity, would be .001 cent per kilowatt hour. So, whatever they're able to bring to the table, they get paid their .001 per kilowatt hour off of. There's no payment made by the municipality directly. That is the same rate that Colonial bid, in fact, it is the only rate that has been DPU-approved by any of the aggregators in the Commonwealth. So it is the usual and customary, so that's, generally, you'll have a price issue that you can look at in procurement and make a determination on price. That didn't exist in this case, because they both came in in their sealed envelopes at the same exact price, again, the one that DPU has previously approved.
I went through the proposal, you're right. Is there any way to get this up online, so folks understand, explains what opt-in, opt-out is?
They will, once, if you-
That whole website explains it.
Right, if you allow, right, if you allow the award, they will be here next week, and they'll begin the process, and they actually have, they have, they'll have a link on the front of our website that will be very descriptive, that will talk about community aggregation. If you hit the link, it'll run to a standalone website platform that they generate that has all the information on it. You can opt-in, excuse me, you can opt-out online, you can ask for a consultant to speak with you to give you additional information, everything, you can do it electronically for those that don't, that don't do business electronically. There are postcards that get mailed to every metered account as well, that have that same information available to them. So, they're anxious to hit the ground running, and we actually may have the ability to, to roll our aggregation out with Westboro and another community that's escaping me right now. They're just a little bit ahead of us on the curve, but we may actually even have the benefit of putting the town- benefit of putting the town of Townsend's private electrical load into the bucket with those other two communities' load to get that much even bigger bite in the marketplace.
Would they be willing to send a representative out, just to explain to the public at a future meeting, what it's all about?
They're prepared to come to the next meeting.
Oh, great, perfect, so they can explain it to the folks what it's all about. Yeah, entertain a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the aggregate, municipal aggregate contract with Peregrine, authorize the town administrator to complete that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I think I'm done.
Now you're done.
Thank you.
Board of Selectments Updates, Announcements, and Reports. Did you have anything, Cindy?
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. Did you have anything? All right, I just had a few things. I know the board and the town wants to.
Madam Chair, if I may.
You?
I apologize, I just thought of it. Getting back to the budget, since, was there any consideration made to add on an article for capital plan? I know Dawn's here, and I'm still working on my capital plan, because I didn't know where that capital planning committee was at, so.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm not on that committee.
Right, I know, but.
Through the chair, I'd be happy to address that. We did speak to the finance working group yesterday morning, and normally, the capital plan for fiscal '17 would be well underway, in fact, I think eventually it would be nearly complete by now.
Yeah, March 1st, it would have been submitted.
And that didn't happen this year. And given the fact that we don't know what, actually, we're going to have available revenues right now, it's likely going to be a recommendation, and this is the first anyone's hearing this other than the working group yesterday morning, that we not try to shuffle a half-baked capital plan together in the next five weeks, but instead do something more meaningful over the summer. And I know that there are some concerns that people apparently don't like to do capital plan stuff on special town meetings, I've been told, but I'm looking at you.
Well, it's always been done at the annual, but I mean, we're in unusual circumstances, what are you, you know, what are you going to do?
So, I mean, the short answer is no. There's not likely going to be a capital plan proper done for the annual, and it'll be left to those that will make that decision, whether that would be something that'll be moved towards a special, or ruled a full, complete year.
A special within?
No, a special probably later in the late summer, early fall.
If you have specific, because you're funded with water receipts, you know, work with Jim and figure out how we want to do that.
That was my concern, I mean, we have some projects.
I do have your stuff that made it in under the wire.
Okay.
So your stuff is technically in. What I don't want to do is be in a position where I'm unilaterally putting forth capital projects outside of the normal capital plan and cause trouble. But there are certain things that will need to be done. For instance, the fire department has had a capital item that's been waiting since the special was supposed to have happened last fall, for an ambulance issue. That's in the book as well. Now, how that gets worked through the capital committee, or not, is something that that committee will have to determine, but that is under the wire, as are your thoughts.
Well, that was my concern, to make sure, I was thinking, assumption it was going to be within the capital plan, but these separate projects, if I should have made them a separate motion in.
You're in.
Well, and also, Paul, with the bylaw, the bylaw says the capital plan's supposed for the annual town meeting, but since we can't do that, the selectmen have the ability to add emergency, or this would be unforeseen capital items to the warrant. So it doesn't mean, you know, your stuff where it's funded separately isn't going to be on the warrant, even though it's not part of the overall capital plan.
Okay, I just want to know.
And same with the fire, because it's a unique circumstance. Did you, were you waving at me?
No, no, it's just, I'm sorry, it was a corner of my eye, so.
All right, sorry, I have to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. So.
Just so Paul's aware, I'm on the capital, and we haven't, because right now, there's only three members, and we're going to, after talking to Jim yesterday, we're going to go ahead, but we haven't organized yet. So I have still requested Jim to put out the capital forms and make sure that everybody got their capital projects in. That gives us the opportunity to go through them, not in a rush, but then out properly. If there is projects that are critical, you need to highlight that, and I will work with Jim to make sure that that is all taken care of.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Todd, real quick.
Oh, just on the whole idea of a capital plan and a capital committee that's under the control of town, I would have assumed capital projects would have been under the direction of the Board of Water Commissioners, and so long as it met their budget, there wouldn't be an issue. So I'm a little confused at why, of that part of the process, I guess.
It's been outlined in the bylaw, that's been in place for five or six years. How long has it been? A long time.
The whole point of having an enterprise account is to separate the two.
No, it's just financing, it doesn't mean the town shouldn't have to approve it as a whole, but I mean, we're not going to get into a capital planning discussion, are we? Yes, not on the agenda.
As a finance structure, you're right. Finance structure, enterprise funds can be used for nothing but the expenses of the enterprise. What Carolyn is saying is, but it has been, at least under the bylaw locally, all of the capital requests, from wherever they're being funded, go through one process.
Okay.
And that's been consistent for the last years. So back to, I just wanted to express my deepest condolences, and I'm sure Cindy and Gordon as well, to the Thorpe family on the loss of their beloved Sean, and also, we lost another gem the other day, Beulah Reno, so I wanted to extend our condolences to the Reno family. The other thing that I had on my list is, we had a discussion at our last meeting about having Charter Committee come in and kind of talk to the public about all the changes. I didn't know what our schedule was going to look like over the next month, but we might need to meet, you know, every week for a little while. I know that doesn't, I know we have to meet April 5th, that's a Tuesday night, so we have to go to the public comment, but maybe Jim can look at his schedule when we get back, because I'd like to schedule that public hearing for the Charter very soon. And also, did you get the goal list that Jody had sent out?
Oh, yes.
If we could put that on as well. Let's see, oh, the warrant, now, all the articles are due March 1st, but do we need to open and close the special town meeting warrant?
It's interesting, there's nothing in the law that prescribes a window within which it should be opened. A lot of charters actually say that it can be opened no longer than and no shorter than, but there's nothing locally about that in the bylaw of the Charter, which surprises me. Technically, you do need to call the warrant and announce, you know, that the meeting will be held, a date, time, and a location. Statutorily, you only have to do seven-day notice for an annual and 14-day notice for a special. So at your next meeting, everybody knows by Charter and bylaw when the annual town meeting is, so it's not one of those surprise things where you have some discretion. So at your next meeting, even if it's next week, you could officially have it on the agenda to call the warrant open. The one question that begs is, once you've officially called the warrant open, is that, is there any function to that, other than just the technicality?
Tradition, I think. Everyone's asking me, "Are you going to open the warrant?" And I'm like, "Yeah, okay, we'll open it and close it." I think it's tradition, it sets the date, they know when the special town meeting articles need to come in. Ordinarily, it's March 1st, it goes along with our bylaw, but I didn't know if we wanted to address that. It makes no difference to me, but I thought I would ask.
Address having it open for additional submissions?
Yeah, if we wanted additional submissions or not. It makes no difference to me, I just thought I'd ask.
For just the special or for the annual?
The annual, set by bylaw.
Oh, okay.
So, do you want to just leave it as it is? And if folks have questions, can I ask them?
My thought on it would be, and this is just because I'm new here, and I wasn't aware of the March 1st, but when I hear from the moderator, that he also wasn't aware of that.
I know.
Perhaps there are other folks that wanted to get an article in that also weren't aware, and we've not done a good job at all of publicizing that. So if you do next week want to open it, leave it open for a number of days at a minimum, to give people the opportunity to get something submitted?
For the special.
It could be for the special or the annual, depending on.
We can open the annual as well.
Because we can take it in, I mean, the bylaw sets you have to have it in by March 1st, but there's nothing that rules the selectmen from putting those articles on, so.
That's kind of your discretion, I just mean.
Okay, so, yeah.
You can't be compelled to, but you can allow.
I would like to open it, so that new articles can be submitted.
I think so too, because obviously, folks are just not remembering the schedule.
Does that mean that the one that I submitted?
You can rewrite.
I can rewrite. It will be with the same intent, it's only to simplify something anyway.
Yes.
But is that what that means?
Yes.
Is the plan to have a special within the annual?
Yes, yes, yes. It's just for clarification, because a lot of folks weren't aware of that, so.
Thank you.
Let's see, now, Dawn?
Just one thing, just make sure that once we have all the warrant articles for both the annual and the special, that copy gets sent to the [inaudible].
Absolutely. And you had a draft of a warrant going, if there was going to be a special, so I've been building off of that with things that have come across the desk, so I'll make sure that once everything, whatever the deadline is, whatever's across the desk at that point gets rolled into the document and get that out of draft, you guys.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we want to give it any longer than a week, because you have a lot of work, but just a tradition, and people are used to that, so. You had mentioned at the last meeting, which, you know, we've bounced around before about getting your checkbook online, and, I mean, I've always been a big fan of that, but until we get that software system up, how difficult do you think it would be just to scan our bills payable warrant in and put it up there?
It's time. It's not difficult, it's just time.
Do you think that would be a reason?
I'm intentionally not making eye contact with Jody right now.
Okay, well, I just thought, you know, I mean, sometimes it would be ridiculous, it would probably be 15 minutes of scanning it, because there's a lot of items, but like, today's warrant is really thin. I mean, I would even volunteer.
I think something that might get us some of the way there is each end of the month, Terry prints an expenditure report that shows what people saw at town meeting, but in a month-to-month live update.
Just putting that up for now?
Just even scanning that document once a month will at least give people the opportunity to follow along without having to come in and dig through paperwork. So maybe it's kind of baby steps towards that, we get, and then we get that up there, and then work towards getting the actual payables out.
It might help Terry too, with public records requests, if somebody comes in and asks a bill or a department, they lose their bill. It's right there, and I know in our audit, we're actually missing invoices, as when they just kind of, "Hey, you need to make sure all your invoices," so if they're all scanned in from the warrant, and they're uploaded, they're, it's kind of a.
I know Jody scans all of ours, so we do have at least stuff that comes out of your executive office, we have everything scanned already, so.
Yeah, when we talk to Terry, I think that would be a good solution, then you're never losing any of your invoices either, they're not misplaced or misfiled, they're part of the package.
So in the same breath, we're calling for a volunteer to step forward and scan invoices for us, so.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm just bouncing the idea out there, it's an updated report. And that's it. So with that, go to 4.3, meeting minutes. Entertain a motion, which if you want me to read them all, the record, there's no sense in doing that twice. Anybody have any question on any of them?
No, I reviewed them, fine.
No, I went through them all.
Okay. So entertain a motion. They're all executives, correct?
Correct.
Should we read the date, or just say, as listed on the agenda?
I think with executives, you should probably read the date.
We'd like to read the dates, just go through the whole list.
I'd like to make a motion to release, are we releasing or approve?
Approve and release.
Approve and release. The executive session minutes from February 1st, 2011, April 26th, 2011, January 3rd, 2012, July 31st, 2012, October 9th, 2012, January 8th, 2013, January 15th, 2013, February 12th, 2013, February 16th, 2013.
26th.
What did I say?
16th.
February 26th, 2013, March 12th, 2013, April 23rd, 2013, May 21st, 2013, October 13th, 2013, June 17th, 2014, July 1st, 2014, September 16th, 2014, November 4th, 2014, December 16th, 2014, June 23rd, 2015, July 14th, 2015, Session 2, September 29th, 2015, October 6th, 2015, and October 27th, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see, 4.4, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrant and sign out of session.
Yeah, make a motion to sign payroll, review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants and sign out of session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.